Call to order. Clerk call to roll.
Mr. Dallowhan?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape May County Herald on January 4th, 2019. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag? Okay, we're gonna start today's work session with A and F. Do you want to stick with this? And then we'll get to Public Works and the budget? Okay?
Yep. Okay, first up, Engineer?
Hey, thank you. I have several updates on capital improvement projects, starting with the Second Avenue Bike Lane striping. That project is complete and we're working on project closeout. Similarly, the Bird Sanctuary sidewalk replacement is complete and the repaving of Paradise Drive is scheduled to begin next week. In regard to the new lifeguard building, we had another progress meeting last week. We're scheduled for an updated presentation, I believe, at the next meeting this month.
Correct.
Some good news, last Thursday, we had a bid opening for the 2019 Utility and Road Program, and that bid came in at $3,938,800, which is approximately $300,000 under budget and lower estimates. That's very good news. We continue to work on the 94th Street and 114th Street Sanitary Sewer Pump Station, with emphasis on 94th Street, as well as the Beach ADA Ramp and Pavilion Replacement Project. In regards to grants, the Cape May County Open Space Board has announced a program, which I think is a great and unique opportunity for the borough. They've announced a special round of funding for coastal enhancement projects. Those grant applications are due January 15th and April 15th of next year. You could consider your marina redevelopment or improvement project, or some type of coastal project. This special grant round will give 100% of construction and 50% of engineering. So I'd call that a, they're grant on steroids. They typically don't do that. Just for some history, Jill and I had met with the Cape May County Open Space Board back in June of 2018 to review the marina, and they were amenable to all the improvements that we threw out on that day, with the exception of the reorientation of the boat ramp. I would recommend that if we proceed again with a project or revisit the marina project, that we meet with them again, since it's been a year and a half. But I think they liked all of the improvements that Jill and I spoke to them about at that meeting.
Isn't it, are there, like a placemaker meeting that you're required to attend in order to be considered? So I'm assuming that you guys will be attending? Early December? First week of December, I wanna say? December 4th, maybe?
Fourth or the fifth, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's on the schedule. So either way, I think it's a great opportunity for the borough to consider a project, whether it's a marina or not. And you have two cracks at the apple, January 15th and April 15th. And that is my report.
Okay, next up, Tax Collector.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. So it's Tax Week, as you all know, taxes were due November 1st. We're busy posting the receipts. In case you weren't aware, the grace period's extended to November 12th, because the 10th is Sunday and Monday's a holiday. We are working on the water bills, and they should be mailed out this Friday. We're also working on month end, and in case you missed your senior freeze, that deadline to apply was October 31st. Anybody have questions for me?
No questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. You're welcome.
Tax Assessor?
Good afternoon. Not much to report this month. From 10-1 to 10-31, we had 10 usable sales. We had 19 total deeds. That's so far. They're sometimes two to four weeks behind. So, and basically, in September, I did 19 certified lists, including all those demolition lists, and in October, I did 13 certified lists for demolition, or, you know, bulkheads, that kind of thing. So, just normal business, address changes, questions from the public, normal business as usual in the tax assessor's office. Any questions? Thank you so much. Have a nice day.
Construction and zoning?
Hello, everybody. Still looking really good in town here with the amount of construction. Everything's still, the market must be still really good, because there's still, we see permits coming in every day. We had six new house permits issued last month, seven demo permits, which seems to be consistent with last year. Probably off of that one for each one of those. So I don't think there's really, from what I understand, this is gonna be a pretty solid year, again this year, with construction in this town. So we're, we have to keep an eye on what's going on with the amount of, what's happening here with the job sites. Other than that, I don't really have anything else.
Same goes through for zoning permits. We had a few more zoning, last 28 this year, 23 last year. The CTTs, the transfers were down. There were 15 last year, and as Margaret reported, 10 this year, but we still got a few on the desk right now, Roger and I are. I think this last week was the first week we didn't have any. But other than that, it's the same as Mike was saying, we're progressing ahead and moving ahead, and it'll be about the same.
Mike, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Sorry. Could you just give Council a little information on the conference that you were able to go to?
The, normally, we vote on ICC members, the board members for the International Code Council. That's one of the main reasons why we try to represent. We can't, they don't have remote voting set up, so the most important thing is that we have people from, and we try to encourage other construction officials or members of any community in the state of New Jersey to go to the conference, to be able to vote for the board members. It gives us a lot of leverage with trying to help with the code process in any of the changes that we have. We have somebody that sits on that council. It benefits the state of New Jersey with getting things passed. That was the main reason. There's a lot of networking, there's a, we go to a lot of functions to network with different states for voting. It's, the main purpose is to go for, to vote for the people that are on that board.
Were you successful?
Yeah, yeah. There was, the funny thing was, there might have only been one person that was, there was, there was a seat that was, they had, most of them were uncontested, which made it easy. People just, you know, either fell off the map, or they just had, they pulled off because they knew that the individuals that were running for that had more, they knew they were gonna get voted. It, there's a whole back thing in, with the way they work this whole process, and we don't, we don't hear about a lot of it until it actually happens. So, we're involved in a lot of the whole voting process and the, any of the meetings that go on, there are classes there that we sit in for, that we can get educational units. So, it benefits me in that respect also, as far as being able to maintain my licenses. So, it was productive. It was very, it was good.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize for putting you on the spot.
No, that's okay. It's fine.
If people had a question.
Can I, can I ask, I don't wanna go back, I'm always two pages behind. Ask Mark a question.
Are you done with, are you done with these guys? I'll let them?
Well, they might help answer it too, but the, you're gonna, I'm glad you're gonna do Paradise, right? Next week, you say? You're gonna start?
Yeah, that's.
But isn't there a lot of construction going on down there? Isn't there a lot of new homes going up on Paradise?
Yeah, we actually, yeah, we actually papered all the property owners with notices.
To do their thing beforehand, right?
Well, also too, if they had any questions, right, if they had any questions about the construction and coordinating parking, and it's gonna, you know, basically, refrain from parking on the street, we'll be having, we'll have an inspector on site to coordinate moving cars in and out, but we really wanna have no parking on the street to do the work.
Well, I'm more concerned like with the road opens, right?
Well, clarification on that, I think I can answer where you're going with that. That section of Paradise Drive, we are only repaving. We're not doing any of the utilities underground, so that is not gonna be under moratorium?
What was your question?
Okay. When we talked about it, that section, Grant just felt was in disrepair, and we wanted to move forward with it, but we knew that the infrastructure was not ready. So we, when we did it, we agreed that there would not be a moratorium on that, so people could still, if they're gonna be building and they need upgrades, they will be able to open the road.
Yes. Yes, unfortunately.
And if the, if the questions were about coordination and contractors working on houses, we're gonna have a guy on the ground, and we're trying to try to work around it the best that we can. Two of the projects are, have been under construction for like a little while, so they're probably gonna close a lot sooner than the other newer one. I mean, at least two of those will probably be out of the mix. Yeah, I think it's, it's probably a three-day operation, it's just a mill and pave. The pavement's in bad condition, that was the driver behind the request.
But the houses that are going up still have to put their wires underground?
Correct.
True.
So the ones that are being built now, would have already done that?
Uh, they might have the undergrounds done. I don't know that right now.
Most of the poles are on that side of the street where the construction is going on there as well.
Right. Was that because, you know, do they know we're doing that? The ones that are being, the new houses going up, they know we're gonna dig up the street?
They were not notified normally through a certified mail process six months in advance, but they were notified by handmail delivery last week. To the owners.
To the owners, correct.
Not, not the contractor, right. To the people that were physically at the property. Right.
But on Paradise, all of your utilities are on the same side of the street as the structures.
I'm already underground, yeah.
Structures. I said, on Paradise, all of the homes that are being renovated are on the same side of the street as the utilities. So they shouldn't have to go out into the street, other than sewer or water, if that's not done yet.
Or gas.
But, yeah. But, gas is not.
Yeah, this is not a typical process.
Yeah. Yeah.
So just thinking, if the people knew that they had an opportunity, just thinking.
I think there's more construction coming down the pike there, though, anyway. There's an empty lot, which hasn't even been started yet, so, but I got, I got a notice at my project, it was on the front door. So, they went out, they're there. You can't even say if it's 10 years old that it won't get knocked down and rebuilt. Right. It's, you know, whether it's 30, 40, 50 years, they, more than likely would, but lately, it's not, it's not the case.
Anything else, Ray?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks, guys. CFO?
Just gonna report on the van sale. On October 22nd, we took bids for $14,459,000 in buy-on anticipation notes. They will mature one year from, well, October 31st of 2020. We funded 13 orders, sewer capital ordinances with it. There were three bidders. TD Securities was the winning bid, bidder with a net interest cost of 1.32%. Any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Borough Clerk?
I just have the issue, the money taken in in our clerk, in the clerk's department for the month of October, $2,093. That's all I have.
Planning Board report?
Planning Board met on October 28th. We did have one application from Stone Harbor Dunes LLC, and they're doing some exterior improvements, a mansard roof, and a little bit of changing on a staircase, and that was approved. We had the Master Plan Subcommittee Update Reports from the Outdoor Dining Committee. Mr. Cates, the planner, is working with the county on how to handle that outdoor dining on Third Avenue, since it's county road. The Subcommittee for the Courts and Zoning Ordinances met last month and continues working on some kind of standards for court properties. We're going, we're meeting, do we meet tomorrow? Yes, it's already time we meet again. We meet tomorrow morning. That Subcommittee meets again tomorrow morning. We had a very long and lengthy discussion on the living fence ordinance, and we had several people weigh in from the public, as well as the Planning Board weighing in, and after, it was long, I'm gonna tell you, it was probably a good 45 minutes to an hour-long discussion. The board members unanimously agreed not to take it any further at this time, and not to recommend any change to that ordinance to Borough Council. We discussed what the ordinance that was introduced last month, or last meeting, about the third floor, changes for those third floor decks, and when they, it's appropriate to put a roof on them, and so on and so forth. We discussed that, even though it had already been introduced, the Planning Board still, we discussed it, and, you know, the board itself is in favor of the ordinance changes. And that is it. That's the, that was everything at Planning Board.
The only thing I'd add is that the application that was approved was involving the motel at the west side of 98th Street, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use. There was no physical expansion of that property with regard to the setbacks, except in terms of the cosmetic mansard roof that they'll be installing, which, if you're able to see the plans, is very aesthetically pleasing compared to what's there now. So, it was really a purely aesthetic change to that motel, which.
No adding of any square footage, nothing like that. It's just decorative in nature what they're doing.
Really a no-brainer, really.
And that was it for Planning Board.
Okay. Next up, as per our nonprofit support request policy, bringing forward several applications that we received. The Marine Mammal Stranding Center is requesting $1,000 this year. Last year and the prior year, they received 500. The Middle Township After Prom is asking for 1,000. They received, I mean, 100, they received $100 last year. Coast Guard Community requesting 500. They received 500 last year. Volunteers in Medicine is requesting 2,500, and they received 2,500 last year and 1,000 in 2018. Cape May Tech After Prom, this is new, a new request this year. They are requesting $1,000. My recommendation on that would be, if you are so inclined to give them anything, it should be the same as we give to Middle Township After Prom, which would be the $100. So, for the 2020 budget, if Council approves all of these requests, it would just be an increase of $100 over the prior year.
And that would be if the, that thousand became 100?
Correct. And that, like, that would be my recommendation.
There was only one other that was, they asked for an increase? Was that Marine Mammal?
I'm sorry, yes. They, I apologize, they asked for 1,000 opposed to the 500. So then it would be $600 increase.
So they justified that?
I mean, they, they filled out all of their paperwork that we requested. See what they're... I'm just trying to see if they listed anything for reasoning why they were asking for an increase.
Looks like they, they come on average four times a year?
They're, they're estimating that they serve an excess of 20,000 people over the summer, but that would be collectively all over. That's not necessarily in Stone Harbor.
Are we in line with other shore communities who contribute? Are we in line with other shore communities that contribute?
I do not know what any of the other communities contribute, and if they do, I mean, that's something we would have to ask. I'm not advocating for any increase. They are asking for it, but.
Anybody have any comments on that? They are a nonprofit, they are completely volunteer-based, correct? They're 100% volunteer-based?
Completely, 100% volunteer-based. If we have any type of seal, other animal that is stranded, they will come here at no expense to the borough and take care of it. I mean, they do offer a great service to all the communities.
Yeah.
So if, if you are okay with it, it can, we can go with the, with the increase of 500?
I feel like this is almost like an insurance policy, where if we get, one year we might receive $5,000 worth of services, and one year we might receive nothing or 500. So, personally, I think it's important to have them, so, and $1,000 given in the grand scheme of things seems very reasonable.
I think if we didn't do that, then we'd be asking Grant to go out there and pick up the dead, whatever it is, and then he'd be asking.
Grant's like, no, you won't. I'm not doing it.
He would be asking, where do we put it now?
Yeah.
I got it, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think $1,000 is, is that exorbitant, and I, you know, the Middle Township and the Tech After Prom Party, I mean, $100 is.
I was just gonna say, I don't know what you can get for $100.
It's like, God, you go to the movies and spend $100 now, you know?
Right.
We could, I think we oughta, I don't know.
I say 250.
What to bump it up to?
250 each seems like, they're part of the community. I mean, I know they're not part of Stone Harbor, but.
I hear you, that 100 does seem like, how do you guys feel?
Who pays for the After Prom Party, other than us?
It looked, in reading what I was reading through, they ask every town, I think they do fundraisers throughout the year, they solicit donations throughout the community towns.
Parents contribute as well?
I would imagine they do.
They do through their, I'm gonna date myself, the PTA, through those associations, they contribute, and they, a lot of the parents are the ones that actually are there that evening.
In their documents, Tech says that the affair costs $20,000.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah.
What do they have?
That's what it says. If you read the paperwork, it says it costs $20,000, the event.
Magicians, they have.
And I guess they're entertaining for eight hours.
Couple bands.
A band alone's gonna push you up, yeah. And they're entertaining all the way overnight.
They must have booked soul choirs.
Yeah, and they give, I mean, if, if they're doing their after one, similar to ones that I've had experience with, they're, they're giving away prizes to, to the kids periodically through the night. Number one, to encourage them to stay there and not go out and do something.
Temptation.
Have a hypnotist, that's unbelievable.
They should, for $20,000.
Yes, $20,000 for two. I have no idea what the budget is. That's the one I believe was for Tech. I, they didn't, Middle Township doesn't say specifically what.
No. They ask for 100?
Middle asks for 100, Tech asks for 1,000. Middle, we have probably been supporting Middle for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
Tech, this is the first year.
Correct.
Well, if we make those increases, it's $800. You know, increase the Mammal Stranding Center, and then increase the two After Proms to 250 from 100.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So what do we do? We bring that forward next meeting?
If you're okay with that, did, I don't know if we did a resolution, we just incorporated into the budget, I believe, if you're okay.
No motion, just to approve them.
Just a motion.
Okay, and then you'll put them into the budget? Okay. Okay. So you're gonna do 250 to each high school, and 500 to the Marine Mammal Stranding Center?
Correct.
1,000.
1,000? 500 more? Okay. Okay. And Public Works? Right, you got any more, more, Joe?
No, that's it. Before we jump into their capital, can we jump into the utility to talk about the request for reimbursement? Only in case we run longer, some of the department people that may be involved may have to leave. So there was a request for reimbursement. Debbie, you wanna come up and talk?
In case we have any questions.
Sorry, it's all the way in the back here. Rocky should be with me. The utility, as I'm looking for it, the utility department met on this twice, and, hold on here. Okay. Okay, so the request came from Adam Hall, the Vice President of PPA Realty Group, for the property. Apparently, there was no water pressure at the building. They were told by Public Works that there was no issues within our lines. They called out their own plumber, and they were not able to find any problem. They also called out, let's see.
Mitchell Nichols.
I'm sorry, what?
Mitchell Nichols.
Okay, thank you. So, contacted the borough, we reviewed it at first, said that it wasn't our issue, then as they went through it again, and our guys were called out, it was actually our fault. There was repairs that we needed to do, that the issue was ours. So they're saying if we had told them that it, if we had found out that it was ours first, they would not have incurred this addition, this additional expense. So they've requested a refund of $2,029.50. The recommendation from utility committee was that we agreed that it was our error, and that provided, that, you know, assuming that they give us proof of payment, that we would authorize the refund. So that would be our recommendation to do so. Do you have any questions on that?
Questions?
Nope, seems cut and dry.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we felt it was.
I haven't received the statement you wanted me to get.
I'm sorry, what?
I haven't received the credit card statement. We still only have that.
Right. We've received proof on the one, but not on the second yet, but the understanding would be, they don't get the refund until we get the proof.
Okay.
Thanks, Debbie.
You're welcome.
We're gonna do a resolution.
All right.
So we're not ready to do anything formal with that, 'cause we're still waiting?
For one receipt.
Okay.
And then we'll do a resolution?
So once Debbie gets what she needs, we can bring it forward?
Then we'll do the resolution, yeah. The net, hopefully, it should be at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, you wanted, you have a regular report to do, if not, I'll jump into the capital. Capital? What's first, capital or the report? What are you doing?
No report.
Capital.
You have your reports, right? If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Oh, I'm not gonna be able to see that. I can't see it. Where's the thing that? Where's it at?
I had some caffeine, I had the, I had diet coke.
Oh, you're good.
Yes, it's in your Dropbox, but some of you have the printout version, because you don't do that. I need to, I can't see it.
All right, Grant? This is the summary, we'll go into the details. All right, Grant, this is the summary. We'll go into the details.
Okay, this is our 2020 budget for Public Works. Line one is for Public Works Infrastructure, if you have the breakdowns. We're looking at doing 106th Street, 200 block, 106th Street Beach Block, 108th Street 200 block, 102nd Street 200 block, 101st Street, 100 blocks, 99th Street Beach End, 103rd Street Beach End, and 104th Street Beach End. Public Works' responsibility is 40% of the, of the total for the project. And this entails curbing gutters and paving on those streets. Number two is a solid waste packer with a plow. When I talked to you in the Public Works Committee meeting, Ray asked me how many packers we have. We have nine. I think I believe I said that we had eight packers. The average lifespan on a packer is about five years. We hold on to them for 10, if not longer. This packer will be replacing a 2004 Sterling. Number, number three is heavy equipment. We're not looking to purchase any heavy equipment this year. Number five is, is, I'm sorry, number three is for heavy equipment. We're not gonna replace any, anything this year. Number four is for a dump truck to replace a 2007, which is our salt truck. I showed Public Works Committee the pictures of the underside carriage of that truck, and it's rotting away. So we're looking to replace that. Number five is for a service vehicle. We're not gonna replace any of those vehicles this, this coming year. Number six is for bulk cans, beach and public cans, replacements and additions. All the, the public, beach cans are, are rotting away. They're old. They're plastic. Plastic only lasts a certain amount of time. The, the metal frames that they stand on are falling apart as well, so we're looking to replace those as well as a 27-yard dump dumpster that we use for our bulk trash. So that's what that is for. It's, we're looking for $28,000 to do that. Number seven? Number seven is for bulkhead replacements. We're not looking to do any bulkheads this, this coming season. We are looking in 2021 to do possible replacements. Number eight. Number eight is a request for a module restroom to replace the one that we have at 95th Street. It is, it was homemade. We took an old modular trailer and tore it down to the frame and built what you have out there right now in-house. The, the idea is to replace that one. It's not up to today's standards for ADA compliance. It's also rotting away from underneath. The, the frame that we used to build it is right there on the ocean. It's corroding. And we're gonna have to probably tear it down where it stands and replace it with this module. This module will be fully ADA compliant. Once the, the borough decides to replace the beachack and put a permanent bathroom there, we'll be able to take this module down to 123rd Street Parking Lot. And the idea is to run water and sewer into the parking lot to replace the porta-pots that are down there right now. And that's hopefully in the next couple of years, we can do that. Inside of the module, there are three and three, I believe. And then there's also a, a family bathroom as well. It'll pretty much look like the 95th, 96th Street Water Tower bathrooms in its, its layout with a janitor's closet, a family bathroom, men's and women's room. It's 48 feet long by 10 feet wide. Number nine is for replacement of sidewalks throughout the borough. Some of the suggested areas that we need to look at are Borough, Public Works at 80th Street, the 96th Street Same Place Side, and 96th Street Side of the recreational area, the Second Avenue Side of the Bird Sanctuary, 95th Street Parking Lot, and 97th Street Parking Lot. 103rd Street Island at Third Avenue. That, that goes from 103 to 104. Beach and Bay Improvements is number 10. That's for improvements to the beach accesses, not the, the ADA accesses that are gonna be rebuilt this spring, I'm hoping. We'll get that project up and running. But now that we're not doing the, the beach replenishment, there's a lot of issues with some of the, the entrances to the beach that we need to rectify, replacement of the, the post rail fences. This also will fund some of the replacement of the docks at the marina, ramp engineering if, if necessary at the marina, as well as stair walkways and surfaces, as well as the pilings. If we have any winter storm issues or replacement of the rotten, older pilings at the marina. Number 11 is generator changeouts and HVAC system. We're looking to replace the, the generator here at Borough Hall. It's the oldest one we have here in town. It was pre-sandy installation. I think it was even further back than there, than then. It used to maintain both the police department and Borough Hall. The casing on it is rotting away. It's diesel engine, and we're trying to get away from the emissions, diesel emissions. We'd like to change it over to a natural gas system, reduce it in size. And a natural gas system engine runs a lot quieter than a diesel engine, as well as emissions. So that's what that funding is for, number 11. Number 12 is for signage and for the kiosses. I need two new kiosses because the, the original two that we have at 97th Street and at the beach lot, they're no longer being serviced by the company. So all that data, that, that machine is outdated. They've moved on to more, more efficient kiosk machines. So we need to replace those two this year. As well as any signage, as you can see in the description box or the justification. So that if we need to replace any of the signage in town, as well as our hazard signs, we're also looking at flood signage for Third Avenue. That's what that is for. Number 13 is for, is for maintenance equipment. And that is to replace the, the smaller tractors, mowers, blowers, and any small equipment that we use at Public Works. We would replace that. And that is also described in, in the project justification. And that would be for all of our departments, from all six of our departments, other than water and sewer. LED changeout is number 14. We've been systematically changing out all the LED lights in all of our buildings, all of our outside lighting. We are looking to replace the, the fluorescent lighting that's on 96th Street between, in the 200 block with LEDs. And that's what this will help fund. There's also a Clean Energy meeting we have coming up, which they're, they are also offering some rebates with that. Those changeouts, so hopefully we can work something out with them. Number 15 is for building replays, repairs, fencing and security. That is for fencing around our yards, any of the, the areas where fencing is needed to be replaced, damaged. Camera systems that we have at, at Public Works, we're looking to increase that by two more cameras. Basically to help us with, with our flooding issues or any kind of issues with... The police department asks us to use their, our cameras to look for issues they may have had in, in that area with theft or malicious damages. So we're looking to increase that. We're also looking to put a camera system at the marina so we can observe the tidal flooding in that area. It's also to, some of the projects we're looking at is the, the north wall of this building. Repairing that north wall. It leaks. We haven't found the leak yet. We've been looking at that for four or five years in a row, where we did different, a new roof. We pointed the wall. We still haven't found out what the issue is. So we're looking to fix that issue with this funding. And also some engineering designs that, and, and improvements to the second floor of the old police department. And then number 16 is for street line paving. That's for all the parking spaces in town on 96th Street, Third Avenue, 97th Street. Everything, actually, everything from, from 93rd all the way to 99th Street, First, Second and Third Avenues. And that's it for Public Works.
All right, does anybody have any questions on Public Works before we jump into utility capital? If not, we will jump away.
Utilities. Number one is also infrastructure program. Same streets that I mentioned in Public Works. This one will, will take care of the utilities, underground utilities. Stormwater, water and sewer. It would replace the laterals for, for both of those, the, the water and sewer. And additional utilities for electric, cable crossings from one side of the street to the other on all of these, these streets that are mentioned.
Hey, Grant?
Yes, sir.
Is the, the gas has already been done on those streets?
They will be notified, yes. Most of those, those, those streets have been, have been worked on.
Okay.
I believe we're just about done with the, the changeouts for, for cell towers of gas and their improvements. They just need to come back and pave our streets that they haven't done yet.
If not, they'll get notified at least twice before the project goes out to bid and then they get another crack at the apple at the pre-con meeting. So they'll get a lot of notice if the gas hasn't been done, they'll get hit with it.
So if there's homes in town that, on these streets that don't have gas now, natural gas, they'll be notified, noticed and coordinated with the homeowner?
Because you have the certified mailings that go to the property owners and then two rounds of notification to the gas company.
So as far as improvements on, on their side, on their mains and, and laterals, they've already done all that. Number two is for stormwater improvements. That is for this, the stormwater issues we have. This, this funding is, is for engineering and flood and tidal that we're working on with the, the pump station in 93rd Street, as well as the other areas that we're, we're having issues with from 99th to 96th and then from 89th all the way down to 80th Street. Number three is for the, the water meter and air changeouts. We talked in Public Works meeting af, I'm sorry, in the utilities committee meeting about pushing all this together. I was gonna space it out over a couple of years, but in our conversations, it seems the sooner we do this project, the more efficient our collection of the data is gonna be. The issues we're having with having to manually read the, the system right now is becoming more labor-intensive. So we decided to try to put this all into the budget this year and, and move forward with it. Number four is for the water tower reservoir improvements. If you take a look at the tower right now, the exterior of the tower actually needs to be painted again. There's a lot of rust areas that are bleeding down the, the pedestal itself. There's also some interior work in the tower that needs to be done that wasn't done in the last project. It also funds any kind of issues we may find in the, the cambering. We, we, we put a submersible down inside of the bowl, inside of the 500 gallon tank to see if there's any improvements that need to be done on the interior of the tank. As, we haven't gotten the results back from that. Soon as we have that, then we can move forward and decide on what the next action needs to be done in doing improvements. There's also the reservoir, the green area next on the west side of the water plant. Across the street from here is a reservoir that holds water. And that has some issues with the discharge pipes into the reservoir that may need to be repaired this coming year. Well, and, and water plant improvements. 90, 101st Street well needs to be rehabbed. We have a company come in and do a, a test on all of our wells every year. And with their recommendations on the 101st Street well, it needs to be rehabbed, which means that they'll, they'll go down and, and replace the screen at the bottom of the, the, the well shaft itself. Any improvements that need to be done to the shaft itself, the impellers, they will do that then. That's what, that, that cost will take care of. Every so many years, we have to, to rehab a well. We just rehabbed 90, 95th Street on an emergency, actually. We found a crack in the, in the sleeve of that shaft. And the production out of 101st Street is not up to where it needs to be. And the company is recommending that we rehab that well. Sewer lift station improvements, we're working on. And we had a successful meeting today with the designers of the, the 94th Street Sewer Lift Station. We're also looking to replace the, the lift station at 114th Street. That's what this funding will hopefully take care of. The estimate is around $700,000 to replace that, that lift station. Heavy equipment is number seven. I'm not looking to, to purchase any new equipment or vehicles. That's number eight. Outfall, nine is not, for the outfall. We're looking to put check valves into the outfall systems that we have now and get rid of the duct bills that are out there that are, have been inefficient. I believe on Thursday, we're gonna- I believe on Thursday, we're going to be changing out one at Eighty-Sixth, Three-Hundred Block, in the middle of Eighty-Sixth Street. Right now, there's a flapper valve on there that doesn't do anything except flood the street because of the backflow. That, we're hoping to have that changed out on Thursday. And then we have two others that we're going to be changing out at One Fourteen and Three-Hundred Block, as well as Eighty, Eighty-Third Street. The county has a outfall pipe right next to our outfall pipes at Eighty-Third Street in the bay. It has a duct bill on it, it's not working. So we're going to take that out, put a check valve in there. Hopefully that'll stop the, the flooding. Even on a minor flood, we have issues in that area, so this is to take care of those situations. We're looking to change out all the, the duct bills in, in town, and that's what this Number ten is for manhole inserts. Every manhole that we have in town has what's called a, a, an insert. It looks like an upside-down cap. It holds any kind of stormwater from getting into our, our sanitary sewer, so we don't have to pay for that inflow when it goes to the MUA. They are very efficient in what they do, but we put a, a lot of them in about ten or fifteen years ago, and it's time for them to be changed out. They're rotting. They're made of plastic. And they've seen better days, they've outlasted their lifespan. Equipment purchases is number eleven. As you can see on the list there, there's a few things. We want to get a new trench box, pipe cutter saw, asphalt cutter, and some trash pumps. That's what that will be funding for the water and sewer department. Number twelve is for GIS. This is for Mark to upgrade our GIS system mapping. We map all, all of our valves, all of our, our hydrants. We even, we even, we're going to be GIS-ing all of our flowerpots, all of our hanging baskets, all of our signs, all of our trashcans in town, all the public cans, that will go onto the system, and Mark will be able to, to upgrade the maps that we have right now. As well as that, that, that mapping can be utilized by the county as well, right? Fire hydrants is number thirteen. That's to replace any of the fire hydrants, the old ones. We change out a couple of them a year that are not under the road program, that are, that are over fifteen, twenty years old that are out there. I think we still have a couple of that are put out there and that were built in the twenties. So we're looking to change some of those out. If we have a, a car accident in town, we need to have an, an extra one of every size, length, depth, and that's what that will be funding. Number fourteen is for the grinder pump for Eighty, Second Street Rec. The new Rec Pro Shop also has bathrooms in it, but Pro Shop sits lower than the grade of where the, the sewer runs, so it has to go, the sewer has to go uphill. So we have to, we had to put a pump in there in order to push that up to Second Avenue and drop that into the sewer mains on Second Avenue. We don't have a spare, it wasn't in the contract, to supply us with a spare, so if that pump goes down, we can change it out without any downtime. That's what that will fund. And then fifteen is for engineering. Some of the projects that we have in town is for improvements for Eighty, Eightieth Street well, as well as a few of the other projects that we have ongoing. That's to, to do the engineering prior to going into capital funding, and that's what that is for. And that's it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the utility?
No.
Number two? Stormwater improvements?
Yeah, that's what we asked, it'll be removing the remaining two outfalls.
It can be used for that? It can be used for that, yes.
Okay.
It's for any, either the bay or the, it's either...
You get asked when does last place come on the beach?
Yep, yep.
Okay. You mean can be?
Can be. It can be. We have to get that pump station up and running, and then we're going to move forward in design and engineering on...
When you say that one, which one?
At Ninety-Third Street, yes.
So if this is anything where it goes through, gets removed, so on and so forth, we're not looking at removing those outfalls till, what, 2021?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. At least 2021.
Okay.
But yes, it's on our radar to have them out.
Grant, perhaps I missed this. What's the purpose of labeling all of the potted plants and things like that?
So if anything gets broken or stolen, or somebody says, "What happened to that plant?", I know where it's at. There's a lot of things in town that I don't know where, I, I know where they're at right now because they're up, but if somebody steals a sign, or somebody steals a, a potted plant, or they, something gets moved from one location to another, I can put it back where it belongs.
Is it an issue?
It, in some cases, yes.
Thank you.
So if we have, we have to have, if we have a conversation with, say, the, the garden club and they want to put in more planters, we can pull up that map and say, "This is what we have now, where would you like to put them?" That way, we can space them out evenly throughout the town.
Thank you. Okay. There's no other questions? We are done with capital for now.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on to shared services.
Next is discussion to bring forward, a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with Cape May County Utilities Authority for our solid waste disposal and recycling services. This is a standard interlocal that we do, shared service. The current one will expire at the end of the year, so we have to bring it forward again and to renew it. If anybody has any questions, Grant will be glad to answer them.
Is that always annual? Is this an annual? Like every year we redo it, or is it just, and it's always just go for one year?
Yes.
I was just surprised it wasn't good for longer.
The resolution references one year.
And that's for four cleanup weeks, four times a year? Does anybody ever ask for more? Any municipalities? I'm just curious.
That's the standard.
That's all they'll do, probably?
For three.
I suppose we could ask if you can have more for further. It's either a yes or a no.
Right. Don't harm in asking, but this is the same as this year?
We can ask that question.
This resolution?
Yes.
Any questions on that from anybody? Or we'll bring forward for next meeting?
Next meeting.
And requests for reimbursement, letter bills?
That's one we...
We did that already?
Okay.
Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Anybody have any questions or comments on anything we covered? Looks like we can do our closed session then, now?
Yeah.
At this time, we're about to consider a resolution to go in the private session. We would appreciate it if you would all remain seated until the resolution has been acted upon. At the conclusion of the private session, we will come back into public session for the purpose of either taking action as a result of our discussion in private session or to simply adjourn. It is also possible that someone might bring up some other item of business in public session after we come back from private session. Resolution 2019, S-160.
Mayor Councilite offer a resolution 2019 dash S dash 160.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Parzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.